Candidates for Ward 3, John Buddha Chefsky and Tony Sumnicked, and Ward 4, David Cummings and Eric Wilhelm, are now seated. Wards 3 and 4 serve Crystal residents living north of 45th and 44th Avenue North. The candidates will speak up for three minutes of their qualifications, experiences, and desire to serve the citizens of Crystal on the City Council. Gentlemen, there is a timer who will notify you at 1 minute, 30 seconds, and stop intervals. You may wish to finish your sentence after the stop sign, but do not begin another sentence. We will begin with Ward 3. John Buddha Chefsky, please present your opening statement.
Thank you.
Take your mask off, please, so we can hear you.
You can't hear me? You can't hear me through this?
We can hear you better without it.
Are you sure? All right, because this is a public place, and we should be masked up in a public place. So anyways, I'll concede to your wishes there, Kathy. Thank you very much. I'm John Buddha Chefsky. You can call me John, John B., or JB. I have a hard last name, but if you want to give it a go, it's Buddha, chef, and ski. Easy, huh? I grew up in St. Paul, on the west side, in a big family, seven siblings. You learn to resolve your differences quickly, or all privileges are gone. I graduated from St. Paul Humboldt in the University of Minnesota. Go Gophers! And went on to a career in banking in 1995. Married Heidi in 1996, and moved to Crystal in 97. It is here that we've raised our family. You know you never stop. You just committed for life. I moonlighted delivering papers to make ends meet, got involved in politics when traffic went from 800 to 1,200 cars per day on our street. I play guitar. I say I play guitar, but my kids are the real artists in the family. I've raised a few fish, argued a couple of times, laughed a lot, but it's all good for the soul. And I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve you here in the city of Crystal in Ward 3. A few things about me. My community involvement. I've served on the Human Rights Commission from 2008 to 2010. I was a Section 2 Councilmember from 2011 to 2014, and I am the Councilmember for Ward 3 from 2017 currently. You can contact me through my website, which is votejohnbuddheshfsky.com. A couple of things that I want to talk about tonight specifically are two issues that are currently, our current council is working on. The Public Safety Building and the Proposed Race and Equity Commission. The current police station has out-served its usefulness and needs to be replaced effectively to serve the people of Crystal. I'll discuss, you know, the funding of it later, but I also want to talk about, you know, a Race and Equity Commission, or the Human Rights Commission. It comes at a time when we've experienced a tragic day with the death of George Floyd. In my lifetime, I have experienced tragic days over and over, and we need to do something. Ryan Adams of Crystal Citizens for Change has brought to us a proposal for a new Race and Equity Commission, a Human Rights Commission, and the current Human Rights Commission was removed by mayor and council in 2015. Formerly, this provided oversight to the council, and we need a new commission that will not need actual capital, but needs more physical, emotional capital to get it up and running. I support it, and there are members of the council that are unsure of the value that a new Race and Equity Commission will provide. And we'll discuss more of this later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buddha Chefsky. Tony Sumnicked, Ward 3, would you present your opening statement?
Hello there. I'm Tony Sumnicked, and I'm running for Crystal City Council in Ward 3. First, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and CCX Media for broadcasting it. I've lived in the Forest Neighborhood for the past several years, and I have a rambunctious rescue dog named Arlo. So you may be thinking, who's this young guy, and what business does he have running for City Council? I want to bring some new energy to the Crystal City Council, and I want to be a catalyst for new ideas on that council. Leadership is not new for me, and I take my responsibilities and my role as a representative very seriously. I've served as, during my time in college, student body president, which, a university is kind of like a mini-city. We have our own residents, we have police, we have streets, we have buildings we need to maintain. In that role, I served on our university's Strategic Planning Committee, where we planned 40 years out. I helped secure state funding for a $60 million academic building, and I worked with the local city council on creating a town and gown association to work with relations between students, the administration, and the city itself. All that during a 9% base budget reduction across the university. For two years, I served as the University of Wisconsin System Chair of the UW System Student Representatives. There, I represented 180,000 students statewide and 26 campuses. During my first year, I took that organization and restructured it to an organization that could affect change statewide. And then, in my second year as chair, we had a statewide UW system base budget reduction of 13% across the system, and I organized a massive legislative outreach campaign at the state Capitol, meeting with all the key state legislatures, members of the state legislature multiple times. And in serving that position, I helped draft amendments to state statute to get the university system in compliance with the U.S. Department of Education guidelines on campus sexual assault. Currently, I serve as a food safety and quality assurance manager, and I helped take an 80,000-square-foot facility from dirt on the ground through the construction process and permitting process in the city of Prior Lake. And now, we have 80 employees there, and in my day-to-day responsibilities, I ensure compliance with state and federal regulations as a food safety and quality assurance manager. And there, I'm also in charge of COVID policies and responses, keeping our employees safe. Currently, I also serve on the Crystal Parks and Rec Commission, and during these challenging times in COVID, I had the idea to keep the commission working by starting a park tour program where the commission could get out and reevaluate our parks and make sure we're following up with our Park Master Plan. Thank you.
All right. Ward 4 candidate David Cummings, would you present your opening?
Hello, everyone. My name is David Cummings, and I'm running for Crystal City Council, Ward 4. I first wanted to thank the League of Women Voters and CCX Media for hosting. I'm running to be the voice of residents of Ward 4, and to give back and serve the community. I've lived in the Skyway Neighborhood since 2011, and I've been married to my wife Beth Lynn for six years. We have two dogs at home. I have served on the Crystal Environmental Quality Commission since 2019, and currently serve as the vice chair. My experience as a special education teacher will contribute to my success as a City Council member. As a special education teacher, I meet with parents and teachers all for the collective goal of working for and helping students. Same basic things that a City Council does. I will apply the same skill set to meeting the needs of Crystal residents. Additionally, my empathy and my ability to connect with people qualify me for this position. The Crystal City Council needs to address systemic racism and strive for racial equity by first looking at the needs of all residents by establishing a Human Rights Commission. The City Council needs to empower this commission by supporting and implementing their recommendations. Climate change will affect everyone, and Crystal should do more to slow climate change's effects. Crystal needs to increase its renewable energy sources and find ways to decrease its environmental footprint. Crystal needs to lead the way in this area. I am a thoughtful and driven person who will be a strong addition to the Crystal City Council. If you have any questions for me or any suggestions on how we can make Crystal better, please do not hesitate to contact me. You can call me at (952) 479-0816, or email me at davidforcrystal@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Ward 4 candidate Eric Wilhelm, would you present your opening?
Hello, my name's Eric Wilhelm, and I live in Ward 4, and I'm running for City Council. I come from the Air Force. My father was in there for over 20 years. I've lived across the United States in probably seven different states, and I've lived in Europe for over four years. This is the longest place I've ever lived in my life, and I don't plan on leaving it. I'd like to help continue the success that Crystal's had, and hopefully I can bring some new, fresh ideas that can expand upon the success that we've already done. I like Crystal a lot, and I was asked by Julie Drescher over the last year, because it's her last year on the council, and she was not going to run, if I would run. At first, I was hesitant, but talking with Julie and seeing what she's been able to do within the community, how she's been in contact with everybody that's contacted her and answered their question, it became a real support for everybody in the community. I really wanted to help continue that success that she had brought. I want to be the voice for the people. I'm not running for any party. I'm an independent. I'm a moderate. I like to stay in the middle. There's success for people out there on both sides, and we need to be able to bring those to the table and not have an argument based on political affiliation. So going forward, if you need to get ahold of me, you can reach out to me through my Facebook page, Eric for Crystal City Council, or you can call me at (612) 599-2008. Hopefully, I can gain your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilhelm. It is now time for questions, and we will ask the candidates for one-minute responses. Candidates will be responding in rotating order, and we will begin the first question with Mr. Wilhelm. What would you identify as your top two budget priorities for the next four years? Please explain.
First off, I would like to make sure that we're funding the police station properly. I'm a forward-thinking person. I want to make sure that the budget calls for future issues that might come up in 10 to 15 years, so that we're not looking to then reinvest money into the police department that we're building. And secondly, I'd like to continue to move Crystal to being debt-free. I think if you can plan well ahead and use the money that you have, just by the Public Works Building, by not borrowing money, we are able to save $6 million as a city. That's a lot of money that you can put towards other things. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings, what would you identify as your top two budget priorities?
First, I would like to see the Crystal Police Budget increased a little bit, because we put, police officers are responsible for too much in the community, and it can be very, very stressful for them. I think it's great that they're adding a part-time social worker, and we should look to increase their funding and find ways to help police officers do their job more efficiently. And that's a great start, so let's find more ways to make their jobs easier. Second, I am for bonding, because it's at a 75-year low. It's very, very cheap and efficient to do it, and that way you can spread out the cost of a building or another project, and you don't have to worry about drawing funds from different budget coffers and worry about a potential emergency where you have to pay for something that happens like a water main break and maybe not having the funding for that particular piece.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sumnicked, what are your top two budget priorities for the next four years?
So my top two budget priorities are community development and parks and recreation. So Crystal made a master park plan, and we need to continue to invest in that and realize that plan. The value of great outdoor spaces has never been more apparent in COVID, and I think our residents really appreciate our parks that we have here, and we need to maintain them. A lot of our smaller neighborhood parks are aging. A lot of them are 20-plus years old across the city, and it's time we start replacing those. And creating innovative parks is a good way to distinguish our community from other areas. I would also like to invest in community development. Our main commercial area by Becker Park and Target, it's a collection of disorganized strip malls that are partially vacant. That doesn't really serve our community well, and I would like to see more development there to make it more of a small-town downtown-type area, where there's local shops and restaurants to be that cultural and economic heart of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Buddha Chefsky.
Hi. The two issues that I would look at most specifically at what I said in my opening statement would be the police station and also the Human Rights Commission, aka also known as the Race and Equity Commission. With the police, the new police station, we haven't done the work yet on the financing of what it, for the building itself. I know we've had candidates come up and talk about bonding, and we haven't talked about also just going straight cash, but you have to go and look through the examples before you decide one way or another. Initially, when we built the Public Works Building, we had $10 million saved for, not only for the Public Works Building, but also for the new police station, and we were going to bond for the rest of the, for the rest of the cost. At that time, rates were at a 50-year low. Now, we're looking at rates at a 75-year low, and given the fact that we're in an economic downturn with COVID-19, it's probably more prudent to keep the cash, given the fact that we may not, we may have other issues that will develop, that would come out of this pandemic that might affect the overall ability to be able to afford and pay for such an expensive project. As for the Race and Equity Commission, that goes hand-in-hand. Thank you.
All right. If we were going to begin with Mr. Cummings, and the question is, if you are elected, how would you plan to stay connected to resident input and feedback?
So what I'd, so what I like to do is make sure I have a Facebook page where I would, after each meeting, have a little rundown and summary about what happened, what was voted on, why I voted that way, make sure I maintain that page so that citizens know they can contact me, and make sure, like, that you're encouraging residents to contact you and hear their input on, I want to be working for citizens and encouraging them to come to talk to me and find ways, and find other ways that I could potentially work with them and hear their input about our city.
All right. Mr. Sumnicked, how, if you were elected, how would you plan to stay connected to resident input?
So I would really like to continue to work with the city on their modes of communication with residents, but where the city falls short, I plan to fill that gap in Ward 3. A little bit ago, the city made a whole bunch of changes to traffic signs across the city. No one in my neighborhood knew any of those were happening. Sometimes, I wake up and go to work at 4:00 a.m., and when you change all the stop signs and all the yield signs around the neighborhood, and no one knows about it, well, that causes problems, and no one knew about it. So when we're making those small changes across the city, it may seem not a big deal to the city administration, but to people that live right by that stop sign, it's a big deal. So that council member needs to be out there, knocking on those doors, talking to those residents, and getting that feedback. Even if the city has no control over if this is happening or not, the residents still need to know, and they should still be able to voice their concerns about it.
Mr. Buddha Chefsky.
I've, in my opportunity being with the city, I've seen the evolution of communication go from phone calls to email to now finally it's text messaging, much like how I keep in touch with my kids. I've been noticing that I've been getting more and more text messages, and it's been very nice, because I think for the constituents, a lot of times, they feel that they want to ask a question, but they want it to ask it in a way in which it's anonymous. And I think the text messaging gives them that opportunity to be able to make inquiries. And then, I'll give you two examples. Like, for instance, I recently had a text message from a gentleman who was, who noticed that one of the haulers in the area was parked on his dead-end street, basically just, you know, running its engine, waiting until they could go and pick up the trash. And so he's a person, and he was a light sleeper, and he had, you know, he didn't feel no, feel comfortable reaching out to the city in order to be able to, you know, to express his concern, so he reached out to me by text message. Secondly, there was another constituent in the south of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Wilhelm, if you're elected, how would you plan to stay connected to resident input and feedback?
Well, the minute I announced that I was going to run, I started getting phone calls or emails from people asking me questions. First thing you do is you respond to them. That's how you keep connected. You respond to them, they let people know that you're accessible and that you'll answer their questions. The other way that you can handle that is by being out in the community, going to places that they go, going to events, showing up. I just recently went to the FFW and helped on their trash day. We walked around Crystal City picking up trash on the streets. You get to know the people there that are working, you get to know people on the street, you get to see people as you walk around. Those are the kind of things that help keep connected to the community, and then the community can trust you that, if they come to you with a question, that if you don't know the answer, you'll find the answer, and you'll get it back to them. Thank you.
All right. We will begin the next question with Mr. Sumnicked. What policies would you pursue, if any, relating to the Crystal Police Department and its community relations? What ideas do you have to make the work of the police department and any changes transparent for residents?
So I have a bunch of ideas in regards to community and policing in Crystal. I have a detailed post on my Facebook page, and I encourage you to go check that out at Tony for Crystal on Facebook. Some of the things I want to focus on are continuous training with the police department, making sure they're trained on procedural justice principles and conflict de-escalation and crisis intervention, not just once a year, but continually, every month throughout the year. And then, as far as community engagement, our department does a lot already, and I want to continue to work with them on ways they can engage with the community more. A police department that knows its community is the best police department and can keep that community safe. And then, as far as collaboration oversight, I would love to see some type of Public Safety Board in Crystal that can really work with the police department on policy and budget and hiring processes. And I would also support the creation of a Human Rights Commission in addition to that, to look at equity and inclusion across the whole city. Thank you.
Mr. Buddha Chefsky.
Hi. Our police department has been very proactive, you know, in this city. Early on, Chief Bannick realized that you could have a reactive police force, or you could have a proactive police force, and a proactive police force was much more beneficial to the community. He also, when, when he was the liaison to the Human Rights Commission, I was there, he and I had some great discussions on how to engage people and get them involved with the community itself in terms of how to help the police department. He said that if, if they didn't have any idea that there was something going on within the, within the community, there was no way in which they were going to be able to effectively operate as a police department in that city. And that's why he was such a big proponent of a Human Rights Commission, in this case, Race and Equity Commission, and he wants that opportunity to be able to have people interact with him and understand what their concerns and worries are within that, within that system. Likewise, this police force has been one of the first to have body cams and to, and figure out how, where the body cams should be on the body in order for it to work properly. Thank you.
Mr. Wilhelm.
I would, our police force in Crystal is a pretty solid police force. I would actively work with the police chief to make sure that they're committing, their community outreach is stronger, that they get out to know people in the community. It's a lot easier to get help from the community if they trust you as a police officer, so the more outreach that the police officers can do, that they can gain the trust of the community, is going to help both. The officer's going to want to help the community more, and the community's going to trust them more to get the help. With the Human Rights Council, I would, what I, what I think should be better is that we have a great source with Hennepin County and the state that already have that set up. We're a small city. We should probably have more of a liaison that people could reach out and contact, and they could reach Hennepin County, and Hennepin County can come to us, and we use this, them as a resource, because they deal with a larger area than, say, Crystal is, and they can deal with things easier and come with solutions quicker to help us get to that. And then, thirdly, we can investigate anything on our side with that liaison in Hennepin County. Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Cummings.
Well, first, we have a very trusted police department in Crystal, and our chief has done a wonderful job, outreach-ing, but there's always ways to get better, and I think we can find ways to keep pushing them, to find more outreach, to get more involved in the community. I think that would be excellent for them. Giving them more ideas from community members through a Human Rights Commission, I think, would be important. I know they have a, you know, a commission that they work with, but a Human Rights Commission might have some other issues that they could talk and discuss and figure out. And I would also like to make police officers' jobs easier, because, like I said earlier, too much is expected of them, and if we can find ways to make their jobs easier, that the city can do, I think that would make not only Crystal better, but our police department even better.
Thank you. Mr. Buddha Chefsky, what would you do to support a vibrant economy in your city, both generally and specifically during the COVID-19 pandemic? What measures would you support?
As you can see with COVID-19, that the business community is changing, it's evolving. You have a situation where, like, large, large stores such as Target are open, but TJ Maxx is closed, or Marshalls is closed, and you find that locations that have a drive-thru are able to maintain their business, whereas those that don't have that opportunity have either shut their doors or have tried to evolve to maybe a curb, curb-style delivery. It's essential to understand that the pandemic itself is going to have a big effect on our economy, and realize that we're probably going to have to make some changes in how we interact with our, with our retail community, with our business community. One thing I want to say about Crystal itself, it's been a great environment for businesses that want to expand, to come from, let's say, North Minneapolis or Northeast Minneapolis to come to, to Crystal, because we have the space, we have the building size, we have the parking, and so therefore, we've been having some evolution in business itself. Thank you.
Mr. Wilhelm, what would you do to support a vibrant economy in your city?
Well, as we go through this pandemic, we are noticing that it's going to be here for a little bit longer. The question is, what are we going to do on the other side? Businesses are going to close. There's no doubt about it. They already are. It's harder for, especially restaurants and small retail spaces, to stay open. We need to then, when this is finally done, and those businesses can come back and not just be a drive-thru, but destination, we need to be able to help support those businesses and give them the retail space and the opportunity to grow within Crystal. So we need to plan for that going forward, and then assess how we're going to attract those businesses to come back. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings, what will you do to support a vibrant economy in your city?
Well, COVID-19 has totally upended our lives, and we have to think forward about it. It's going to be around for at least a year, and the economic effects are going to be around for several years. So the first thing is we need to think about that. It's going to be here for a while, and we're going to really feel those economic effects. So just thinking about that is going to be crucial, so we can plan, you know, toward the future. We've got to be wary of how businesses are changing. Like was mentioned earlier, you know, fast-food places are going to be doing well, because they have drive-through, and maybe, like your mom and pop, like restaurants are going to struggle, because they might have, they have limited capacity, and they might have takeout. So we have to plan for that, and we do have a lot of places where we can add businesses, so encouraging businesses to come to Crystal is a key component of that, and I think there are, there are some businesses that we could definitely add in Crystal that would totally make Crystal a better place. And just having that forward-thinking planning, that COVID and economic effects are going to be with us for, you know, two, three, four, or five years, is crucial to Crystal's future.
Thank you. Mr. Sumnicked.
So if the city does get more CARES Act funding, or more funding from the federal government, I would like to see a lot of that go into the business community in the local area, so we can keep as many businesses open as possible, so when we do get to the other side, we have those businesses already here, they stay on our tax base, and we don't have to go back to residents for more money when we have such a decreased tax base in our commercial area. As far as the city itself, we need to be flexible, we need to work with business owners and approach them. If they have ideas on barriers that they have to maintaining their business, the city should work with them, and really, with those relationships, try to create the best business environment we can in the city during COVID.
Thank you. We will now begin with Mr. Wilhelm. Give us your thoughts on the Blue Line extension, and what can, should, can or should be done in light of the decision in August to stop negotiations with Burlington Northern.
I think the Blue Line would be exceptional for Crystal. It would help a lot. It would help bring in business, it'd attract people to buy homes in Crystal as a destination. So we need to work with the committees to make sure that that continues in a positive way, that hopefully we can bring it back and continue the Blue Line. With that said, if that doesn't look like it's viable anytime soon, we have to find other routes for our community to get downtown, whether it be alternate busing, finding ways for the quicker buses to get downtown, and stuff like that. So we need to plan for the chance that it doesn't happen, but still support the chance that it will. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings.
Well, it was a major bummer to hear that the talks broke down between, you know, Burlington Northern and the state. I think the Blue Line- I think the Blue Line extension would be a tremendous thing for Crystal, and we need to strongly advocate for the line to stay here and not be rerouted, because I think it would just be an economic boom for our city, it would be great for our residents, it would be great for businesses, and it's another way to add another transportation layer to help people get around. Crystal is underserved as it comes to transportation, and the Blue Line will be essential for that. I will be a strong advocate for the Blue Line. I think it's a great way to get people around, not just buses or by car, and I think it's super, super important that our city advocates for it and puts pressure on the county and the state to make sure that the light rail goes through Crystal.
Mr. Sumnick.
So they've been working on this light rail project for about 10 years now, and I think probably over the last five years, it's been apparent that the Bead and SF railway corridor was not going to happen, but I'm extremely excited for the opportunities that this presents. Stepping back from Crystal, just from the Northwest Metro, we need this light rail, and I think we can relook at the route and see how it can best serve the region. Crystal is underserved as far as public transportation is concerned, and right now they are looking at rapid bus transit routes, and one of the suggested routes is a rapid bus transit route on Broadway Avenue over to the Robbins Hill Transit Center. I would like to see that route extended over into Crystal. Who knows? We could be waiting for light rail another 10 years, another 20 years, it may never happen, but we need public transportation now, and we could implement rapid bus transit relatively soon, so I think as a council member, I will advocate for an extension to that rapid bus transit route that could potentially be happening.
Thank you. Mr.?
Budishevsky. Yes, thank you. The Blue Line has been in process for the last almost 30 years. $130 million of taxpayers' money has been spent on the Blue Line, and it's essential to this community. The Blue Line represents a jobs bill, an economic bill, a housing bill. It's probably the one catalyst that'll probably help us get beyond COVID, and it will help this area immensely. I've always been a big advocate for it. I live three houses from the Blue Line. I've never, I mean, I've never thought of it as anything but a boost to this community, and I've been a big supporter of it. And I've been very disappointed that Crystal has not been supportive of it. I just think that we, as a community, will benefit so much, because in terms of how the city is laid out, we are not a destination city. Sure, we're a great city, we have a lot of affordable homes, but when I talk about Crystal to other people with whom I work with, they go, "Where? Who? Crystal?" They have incomplete thoughts about Crystal, and I think the Blue Line would drastically improve that and help us immensely. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Cummings, this question is for you. What policies would you pursue, if any, related to the issue of affordable housing?
So I think we need to increase our affordable housing. While it's true Crystal isn't affordable, has a ton of affordable housing in terms of single-family homes, that may not necessarily be true for renters, so I would be a strong advocate for finding ways that we can add affordable housing, whether it's mixed-use or just primarily affordable housing, and I would be a proponent of finding ways to add that in our city, because I think diversifying what properties we have in Crystal would be greatly beneficial for us and for people who would want to live in Crystal.
Mr. Sumnick.
So you've heard many times tonight that Crystal has a lot of affordable housing already, and I think Crystal needs to fill a different niche in the metro. When people talk about affordable housing, they usually think of rental units, and Crystal has a lot of affordable homes, and that's kind of like that missing middle in affordable housing, and I want to make sure Crystal can stay or keep homes affordable in Crystal, so as people get into an apartment, they have a place to go, they can find an affordable home in Crystal in a great community. Aside from affordable housing, I think we really need to focus on making our communities as livable as possible. Crystal is really divided. We have highways and rail lines crossing all over Crystal, especially in Ward Three. I can't walk from one side of Ward Three to the other side without spending 45 minutes walking across the city, and it's not that far. So I would really like to see Crystal become more livable and more walkable.
Thank you. Mr. Budishevsky.
Hi. I've spent quite a few years as a council liaison on the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission itself has looked at affordable housing specifically within Crystal itself, and some of the changes that they've made is that they've reduced the lot size to 60-foot wide from 120, and with that case, we've had some residents take advantage of that, where they've actually split their lot and were able to build two homes on one lot. I think you're going to start seeing more and more of that type of development within the city itself. Also, some of the vacant lots that have been empty for 25 years, and I'm talking about the lot that's right next to Big Louis, we're going to start seeing some affordable housing that's going to go in there as well, some four- and five-story buildings, and they're going to have, not only are they going to have market rate, but they're also going to have below-market rate housing in there as well. So I think Crystal itself is well-positioned because of the land cost is low, and our parks are being redeveloped, we have a lot of great upside to the city itself, and so therefore we're having a lot of development going on now. Thank you.
All right. Candidates, we have now come to the moment. Oh, have I missed someone? I'm so sorry.
That's right. If you want to move.
Mr. Wilhelm. Yes, I'm sorry.
As everybody said, Crystal is an affordable housing place for people. A lot of people call them starter homes. They can come in here, buy a starter home, and then, when the market's good, sell it and move away. What we need to work towards is keeping the affordable homes so people can move in, but also allowing production of market homes, that people come in and can stay and raise a family. We want Crystal to grow and want it to be a family place and a destination for people that have good jobs and pay money and can pay taxes, and then people that have good jobs and need to afford a home and can pay taxes and raise a family here as well. We don't need people coming in, buying a house, staying for three or four years, and then moving to Champlin. We want them to stay in Crystal. In order for us to do that, we need to promote more growth and building market homes, and that's the reality. We have affordable homes, we need to also promote the growth for market homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, candidates, we have come to the moment when you will give your one-minute closing statement. We will begin with Mr. Sumnick.
Again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and CCX Media for putting on this forum some of my promises to the residents of Crystal. First, I'm going to put the people of Crystal first. My job as your representative is to represent your interests, not the interests of the region, not the interests of the city administration, it's to represent you and your voice. I will be a responsive representative. I will make myself available, I will schedule time where you can just come up and talk to me in a public place, and I will listen to your concerns, and I will find thoughtful solutions for Crystal. Government is a passion of mine, and I will continually work to find the best solutions and not just kick the can down the road. You can learn more about me and my vision for Crystal at TonyForCrystal.com or Tony for Crystal on Facebook. Thank you.
Mr. Budishevsky.
Thank you. "You Never Stop, You're Committed for Life." Hi. John Budishevsky for Crystal Ward Three, City Council. Please vote for me. You can reach me at VoteJohnBudishevsky.com. I'm DFL and labor endorsed and got involved in politics when our streets got busy and I wanted safer neighborhoods. I and I moved to Crystal to raise our family, and it's all good for the soul. A tragic day experienced by all was experienced with the death of George Floyd, and Crystal Citizens for Change has proposed a new Race and Equity Commission, and I support it, and if elected, I will back it. In our lifetime, we have experienced tragic days over and over, and we need to do something. Let's do something we can be proud of. Let's do something good for the soul. I'm asking you to vote. Please vote for John Budishevsky. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilhelm.
Again, my name is Eric Wilhelm. I'm running for city council in Ward Four. I'm not running any affiliate political party, I'm here as your neighbor, as your friend. I was asked to do this by a former city councilperson and other people, my neighbors have talked me into doing this. They trust that I will be here for them and bring up their concerns to the council, and that we can work together to help keep debt down, help keep taxes down, and not leverage our future by doing things that's going to cost us down the road. I want to make sure that when people move here, they want to stay, so please elect me. You can reach me at Eric for Crystal City Council on Facebook, or reach me at 612-599-2008. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilhelm. Mr. Cummings.
All right. I'm running to be the voice of the residents of Ward Four and give back and serve the community. My experience as a special education teacher will contribute to my success as a city council member. My empathy and ability to connect with people qualify me for this position. I am a thoughtful and driven person, will be a strong addition to the Crystal City Council. If you have any questions for me or suggestions how I can make Crystal better, please do not hesitate to contact me. You can call me at 952-479-0816, or email me at DavidForCrystal@gmail.com. My website can be found at DavidForCrystal.com. I'd be honored to have your vote, whether you vote absentee mail, early in-person here at City Hall, or on Election Day on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. And thank you, candidates, and to CCX Media for presenting this candidate form. It will be replayed on Channel 799 on Tuesday, October 20th at 1:00 p.m., and Thursday, October 26th at 7:00 a.m. It can also be viewed on CCX's website starting Monday. Again, the election will be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 in the evening, and as you know, early voting began on September 18th. You may vote absentee at Crystal City Hall during normal business hours, 8:00 to 4:30 p.m., and on Saturday, October 31st, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Voting by mail is both convenient and healthy. Direct balloting at Crystal City Hall begins on October 27th for in-person absentee voting. That is where you feed your ballot through a tabulator, just like on Election Day. If you are not registered, online and early registration ended on October 13th, but you may register at the polls on November 3rd, the election day. If you have been a resident of the state for at least 20 days before the election, have a valid Minnesota driver's license, learner's permit, Minnesota ID card, or receipt for any of these showing the correct precinct address. Or you may register accompanied by a voter in the precinct who will take an oath along with the election judge that you qualify to vote in that precinct. If a member of our cable TV audience feels an issue has not been adequately addressed, the League of Women Voter urges to contact the candidates directly. The League of Women Voters encourages informed and active participation in government. We work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influence public policy through education and advocacy. Membership is open to men and women of all ages. For more information about the League of Women Voters, visit our Facebook page at facebook.com/LWVCNHEPR, or at our website LWVCNHEPR.org. Again, thank you for joining us this evening.